Good evening. Welcome to the Lebanon City Council meeting for August 13, 2018. I'd like to start off with a call to order and then our pledge to the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call for a roll call, please.
Yes. Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell, absent. Councilman Coates, sorry, there we go. Councilman Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat, absent. And Councilman Fleming.
Present.
Still last?
Need to have a motion tonight for a...
Yeah, just for a presiding officer over the meeting this evening due to the mayor and Councilman Kincaid.
Keith Campbell. Absent tonight.
That's right. Keith Campbell. Thank you.
I'm looking right at it.
I'll make a motion that we nominate John Copeland as our presiding officer tonight in the absence of the mayor and President Keith Campbell.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll move forward. We'll go now to the approval of the last minutes. Do I have a motion for the approval of the last minutes?
Go ahead.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's been passed. We are going to go to full business real quick. First would be ordinance 2018-11, and that would be the amendment to the traffic schedules. And this would be the second reading on this particular one.
Counsel, thank you. Ordinance 2018-11, as you may recall, is an amendment to Chapter 76 of the traffic schedules. So specifically, as of effective date of this ordinance, Chapter 76 Schedule V stop intersections of the city code shall be amended to include Tiger Way and East Street, a four-way stop, Riley Road and Lafayette Avenue, a three-way stop, Clear Vista Drive and Witt Avenue, a three-way stop. And then the remaining portions of Chapter 76 of the code are not affected by this ordinance and shall remain in full force and effect.
Any comments from the council?
No, sir.
Can we go to the stops again real quickly? The one at Clear Vista, where is that stop sign again?
Kevin?
Sorry, I heard Clear Vista. I don't know if I heard the full question.
I want to know where that stop sign is located in Clear Vista one more time.
Sure. It is, Witt Avenue is the main drive that goes into Clear Vista from the Witt Road and Lafayette Avenue intersection. So in a sense, Witt Avenue continues into the Clear Vista subdivision, changes name from Witt Road to Witt Avenue. As you go into the Clear Vista subdivision, I believe the second intersection you come to is Clear Vista Drive, and that is where that intersection will become a four-way stop.
That will be Witt Avenue will then have stop signs on it instead of Clear Vista Drive, correct?
Yes. I'm sorry, I think I said four-way, a three-way stop. It's a T-intersection. Witt Avenue currently is through traffic with no stop control. There is a stop sign for the northbound traffic on Clear Vista.
I'm not seeing the reason behind that stop sign.
It was a request. It probably doesn't meet warrant, to be honest, although, you know, the city through its city engineer can override warrant analysis if it was deemed appropriate by the city. It was a request that was brought to us by the Owners Association of Clear Vista. So we were approached by the president of their Owners Association, speaking on behalf of the Owners Association, and requesting that stop just to slow traffic down with the through traffic, the additional traffic that would be generated by the Riley Ridge subdivision. So we felt this was a situation that it either benefited or affected the residents of Clear Vista only, and since they were requesting it, we felt that we could support such a request.
More thoughts or comments from the council?
No, sir.
Open up for a public comment. Anyone from the public who would like to speak? Please come forward. Anyone? Okay. I will close now the public comments. With that, do I have a motion for ordinance 2018-11?
I'll make a motion. We pass ordinance 2018-11, amending the traffic schedules to the Lebanon.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance 2018-11 passes 4-0. Next, we have ordinance 2018-12 establishing a capital asset policy. Rob?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance 2018-12, council is an ordinance establishing a capital asset policy that Clerk Treasurer there discussed previously, and it's being retroactive effective January 1, 2018. It has, it is very detailed, numerous sections. Section 1 talks about the general information related to the capital asset policy. Section 2 talks about the definitions of the capital assets. Section 3 talks about the threshold levels for the capital assets, and Section 4 talks about the valuation of the capital assets. Again, Section 5 talks a little bit more about asset definitions by major categories, which would include land, improvements of other buildings, equipment, infrastructure. Section 6 gets a little bit more technical, talking about the depreciation methods that would be used. Again, it talks about the item descriptions, the useful lives therein for several pages. Section 7 talks about capital asset acquisitions and procedures and methods for that. Section 8 talks about the transfers and dispositions of assets. Section 9 talks about periodic inventories. And Section 10 talks about the responsibilities of the Clerk Treasurer's office. Section 11 talks about responsibilities of department heads. And it's, again, it's very detailed, but this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect once adopted.
Any comments from the council?
No, sir.
Treasurer, any comments from you?
Thank you. We did get the capital asset plan back policy, and it's finished. We're going to make a couple tweaks to it and then get the department heads to update these at the end of every year. So we're very excited. I've been here seven years and we've never had this in place. So this will make the State Board of Accounts very happy, and our office will be able to write in those numbers from now on. So it's all good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Like to open this also up to the public. Opportunity for public comment. Anyone from the public like to step up and speak on this? No one? All right. I'll close the opportunity for public comment. On, I'll take a motion on ordinance 2018-12 for establishing a capital asset policy. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2018-12.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 4-0. Is there anything else for old business tonight? Nothing? Go to new business? We're going to go to Resolution 2018-30 Gateway Marketplace Project, resolution of the common council approving an economic development agreement. Rob?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Copeland, counsel. This Resolution 2018-30 is a resolution of this council that would approve an economic development agreement for a project that has been called the Gateway Marketplace Project. I'm happy to go through, and I know we've had some discussions before about perhaps some communication issues and whether or not everyone received this. So we do not need to take any formal action this evening on this resolution. Some of the other boards that have met previously today did take action on it. This is a project that we have representatives from UMBAL that are here, as well as Ms. Catherine Finello's bond counsel, that could go through this in more detail, but if there are any questions. But essentially, I'll read through this resolution, and this is a project. We also have Ben Bond Trager. I don't know, Ben, do you think it'd probably be good to give an overview of the project, and then I can talk about, get into detail what the resolution would be?
Good evening, council members. I know this has been in front of you in terms of the planning approvals for the PUD ordinance and preliminary plan, but just a quick refresher, this is about a 24, almost 25 acre site in the southeast corner of State Road 32 and Interstate 65, which I think we all are very familiar with the site. There are two large industrial buildings sit there now that have been primarily unused, other than storage for a long time. We're very happy to have a developer who is interested in investing in this property for a commercial retail development. They have a site for a significant medical office complex. There is a site that they're marketing for hotel. And then there are a series of five outlots that would have everything from family sit-down restaurants that we sorely needed to anything to banks, fast food, and other like uses. So they are currently marketing these sites and have several folks that have expressed interest. There's nobody that's signed on the dotted line yet, but that's not surprising since they're not moving dirt yet. Once dirt starts moving, we'll likely see some activity from the contract perspective for the sites. But in terms of the actual site itself, in negotiations and discussions with the developer, this is what I call the but-for test. This is but-for city support. Will this project be able to happen? What we're looking at here is a significant cost of entry, if you will, to this site, the costs associated with getting the site ready for this type of development. You obviously have the costs associated with purchasing the site, but then there's also a fairly significant cost to demolish the existing buildings, to the tune of probably about three-quarters of a million dollars, and then also significant infrastructure investment. So what we have here is a situation where the developer, based on the market condition, knows what he can sell those lots for and those costs associated with getting ready to sell them and starting to bump up against that number. So you start creating a gap in the financing. So the challenge here is, is the city able to support the project in some way that allows him to be able to market those sites at a marketable cost to be able to sell and allow people to develop. So the total project right now, we're estimating or projecting somewhere in the neighborhood of $17 to $18 million of assessed value at completion. The total project cost, based on some projected uses, is well over $20 million. We have, what we've looked at here is that the total cost of the public infrastructure portion of the site is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.5 million, and that's a significant upfront investment in order to get these sites ready for development. So as we started looking at ways the city could support, that was a logical place where the city within public right-of-way could assist with some improvements to help make this site a marketable site for those retail users. Seeing going through that but-for test, would he be able to do this without the city's support? The likelihood is he couldn't. Really looking at our market over the last five to 10 years for new commercial sites, we really haven't had any. So we're really testing the market demand for these sorts of sites, and the city support to really get this off the ground is important. So we obviously, we're looking at how we might be able to use a tax increment created by that $17, $18 million assessed value. And I'll certainly let the experts go and see actually how the bond is structured, if you have any questions about that. But that's, generally speaking, the project overview. This is an important gateway to our city, one that we're really excited to be able to see something come in. It's really a valuable development, really changing the makeup of that interchange there coming into the city. So really excited to see this project coming forward. In terms of schedule, I believe the developer is hoping in the next couple of months, if all goes well through this process, to be able to start demolishing those existing buildings, with the intention, depending on how our winter goes, to be able to start delivering building pads sometime, but maybe late next spring, early summer, starting to see something come vertical as long as all the public infrastructure's in. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the general project you may have, but I know you've seen this project before, so.
Ben, this might be for you and Kevin both, has, and just looking at the map that you had up there.
Yeah.
Has NDOT, does NDOT looked at this development in that corner? My only thoughts are the ramp coming off, the exit coming off 65. My first thing I thought, Kevin, was, looks very similar to Whistown Parkway or Whistown Boulevard, whatever it is, comes off, you know, 65 there south. I wonder, have they, did they look at that and putting an additional turn lane? They are coming off the interstate of traffic, got too much backup?
They did require a traffic study. The developer provided that traffic study to NDOT. I think American Structure Point prepared the study. It did not warrant any kind of right turn lane, and certainly NDOT is no longer really a proponent of continuous right turn lanes, so it was not something that they wanted to see either. I will say that similar, well, different than the Whistown exit, or at least different than it was when it used to be more of a traffic issue, this has a continuous center median that currently runs past the Denny's entrance, which was previously closed down with some of those improvements. The state is going to require them to extend that center curb median all the way to Ping Avenue. Of course, there'll be a break at Ping Avenue for traffic to turn left and right through that intersection. But the center curb median will then extend east of Ping Avenue, at least to pass the entrance to Old Ransdale Road, to eliminate the left turns in that area, which should drastically improve traffic flow through that area without any delays usually seen by left-turning vehicles, or caused by left-turning vehicles more appropriately.
You have any questions for the council?
No, sir.
So, counsel, I'll go ahead and give an overview of the resolution as well as economic development agreement, and then if you would like to hear from Bond counsel or UMBAL, the city's financial advisor, then if that's okay with you. All right. So, again, Resolution 2018-30 would be, it's a resolution that would approve the Gateway Marketplace Project. Lebanon Gateway Properties is the developer, and they desire, as Mr. Bond Trager indicated, to invest approximately $17 million to redevelop this real property located at the southeast quadrant by 65 and State Road 32 to support a proposed mixed-use development. All that is set forth in the economic development agreement, which is attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. The EDC, the redevelopment commission, and the Building Corporation have each determined that the completion of the project is in the best interest of the citizens of the city. The common council, by this resolution likewise, believes that the project is in the best interest of the city, and now desires to approve an economic development agreement substantially similar to the one attached as Exhibit A. The developer has agreed to construct a project and fulfill its obligations as set forth in the economic development agreement, and this resolution would authorize the mayor to execute the economic development agreement or any other, and any other ancillary documents required to be executed within the intent, the intent of the economic development agreement. What you've seen before and have is the economic development agreement is an agreement between the city of Lebanon and this council, the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission, the Lebanon Economic Development Commission, Lebanon Building Corporation, and again, the developer, the Lebanon Gateway Properties LLC. And it sets forth several facts about this project. It talks about the creation of the TIF area and the sub-allocation area, or the specific area that was created. It talks about the bonds in Section 2. Again, the amount that is expected to be the project proceeds is $2.5 million. It talks about that the Building Corporation shall propose a lease agreement between the Building Corporation as the lessor and the Redevelopment Commission as the lesssee that would lease the public improvements and related real estate for a term of not to exceed 25 years. I think we've talked in other meetings as well. It's a similar structure that was entered into with the financing, the construction of this building that we're in today. The bonds shall be payable from the lease rental payments received by the Building Corporation from the Redevelopment Commission under the lease, and such lease rental payments are to be paid solely from tax increment and such other revenues as may be available to the Redevelopment Commission, provided that the lease rentals are structured to prevent the lease obligation from constituting debt of the city or the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. The par amount of the bond shall not exceed $3.3 million, and it goes on further to get into the description of what the proceeds of the bonds would be used for, the acquisition, the construction, and installation of the public improvements. Again, I think we can get into more detail if you'd like. If you have questions for Bond counsel or for UMBAL, but that essentially is this resolution, or the economic development agreement.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Would we like a representative from UMBAL to speak? We would?
I'd accept.
We have a representative?
I thought you were going to get a freebie. Just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emma Adlam. I'm with UMBAL, and we have prepared schedules for you in connection with the Gateway Marketplace Project. Like Rob mentioned, the bonds are payable first from tax increment generated solely from this project, then if the tax increment's insufficient, from the city's food and beverage revenues, and then finally, there'll be a property tax backup on the bonds, which is really to help with the rating and marketability of the bonds. It's not intended for the city or the Redevelopment Commission to ever have to levy the property tax. It's really just to help provide an additional layer of security, which would help get lower interest rates and reduce the payments on the bond issue. If you turn to the second page in the packet, and put it on the screen as well. This is the estimated tax increment from the proposed project, based on information provided by the developer for the timing of the project, and we've pulled comparable properties in the surrounding area. The TIF will come in over a three-year period as the development is built. Based on the timing of when the first project is built, it'll be first assessed in January of 2020. So just based on how property taxes are slightly delayed, you wouldn't get TIF till 2021. And then as buildings are built, the tax increment will increase to about $274,000 per year. If you turn to, are there any questions on that page? If you turn?
It says to 2023, but it could be a little longer if it doesn't build out and sell out.
If it doesn't, I mean, it just depends on when the property is built by the developer. So even if he doesn't sell it, he would still be responsible for paying property taxes. So this is an estimate from the timing that they provided to us.
Okay. So does this include the buildings that will be built on the property?
Yes. If you see...
So you don't have to go through it all. I'll just, if the buildings aren't built by 2023, then that number will be lower.
Correct.
Okay.
If you turn to the next page, this is the estimated project costs and funding associated with the bonds. It is an estimated par amount of $3,165,000, which will generate project proceeds of $2.5 million. And then because of the timing of the tax increment, and because you can't make lease rental payments during construction, there is some capitalized interest through February of 2021. And then the last three items are typical issuance costs associated with the bond issue. There's a fee for the purchaser of the bonds, a debt service reserve funded at the maximum annual debt service payment is an additional layer of security, and then issuance cost to get to a total bond issue of $3,165,000. The next page is, just really quickly, is the estimated amortization schedule. It's based on estimated rates. The actual rates will be determined on the day of sale, and then the bonds are currently, based on the timetable, scheduled to close on October 31st. So this is just an estimated schedule based on current interest rates. The next page shows a comparison of the estimated project tax increment to the estimated lease rentals. So you see the, on the left, there's estimated tax increment, and it comes in over that three-year period. We back out an allowance for TIF administration fees to help the Redevelopment Commission pay for annual reporting requirements and reports that have to be filed to the state. So it generates a net tax increment, and when compared to the lease rentals, there's about 116% debt service coverage. But based on the timing of project completion and how long you can capitalize interest, it will be short in the first three years. And because it would be short, food and beverage would have to be used to make those debt service payments. The next page...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we get to our...
Of course.
I guess the question is, why do you think food and beverage is the best one to use to fund that? I mean, I'm assuming you've taken analysis of all our funds or all our...
I can let, Ben, I know that you and the mayor were talking about food and beverage revenues would be generated from the restaurants.
If we didn't use food and beverage, what would we, what could we use if we didn't use food and beverage?
You could potentially look at existing tax increment, but that would impact the other phase of the downtown bond issue. You could look at income taxes, but it just depends on how that plays into with the city's budget. So there's a variety of options. I think the city, the mayor, and others decided that food and beverage would help be offset based on the types of restaurants that are being potentially located there.
How many years were they looking at pledges of the city's food and beverage revenues?
It would be pledged for the life of the bonds, but it's only anticipated to be used those first three years. So when the city's preparing its budget, they'd look at, see, yes, there's enough tax increment, therefore they can use food and beverage for other uses. But it is, it would be formally pledged for the full term of the bond issue.
So in other words, what money... So in other words, what money generated from the TIF, if it doesn't take care of the bond, we'd have to offset that with food and beverage money, correct?
Correct.
Right now, we have to pay the three years upfront because there's no TIF collections, right?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just you're not allowed to capitalize interest for that full time.
Right.
Is there a cost associated with the first three years from food and beverage?
You mean the dollar amounts that they would use? If you look on this, this page five, if you see the estimated tax increment remaining in those first three years, those negative dollar amounts, that's what you would use food and beverage to cover.
So it'd be, what, roughly $183,000 for the three years?
Roughly.
$150,000. And that's as long as rentals and their, their selling of their properties meet the projections?
Yeah.
Could be a little longer, could be less.
I mean, it could be quicker, depending on, it just depends on when the buildings get built.
Are we, I know, I know it mentions TIF in there. I'm just going to, or not TIF, food and beverage in there. If we was to approve this going, going forward with the idea of thinking we use food and beverage, but if we decide that after budget this year, maybe in the next year, decide that we want to use income taxes or something like that, we could do that, couldn't we?
As Bond Counsel, Catherine Shaker.
No, once, once you identify what it is, you have to use that?
Catherine Finello, Bond Counsel with Krieg Devault. Yes, you need to identify upfront now what you want to use. Because we are going to sell these bonds competitively, amongst other reasons, you need to formally pledge whatever you're going to use. But whoever you're selling the bonds to needs to know that as well.
Okay. So if you turn to the next page, page six, this shows the debt service coverage for food and beverage. This is, of course, worst-case scenario if there is no tax increment, but this shows that you have plenty of debt service coverage to the lease rental payments. And this is a coverage that potential purchasers are looking for, for that TIF stream of about 116% coverage. It's not really adequate to provide, you know, enough assurance to bondholders, so they want to see that extra layer of coverage that the debt service will be paid. So this just shows that there's plenty of food and beverage revenues. And as I said, if, at the time, there is tax increment, the city, you know, can use those monies to fund other, other projects.
So the food and beverage account is like the cosigner on this loan.
Yeah, it's, it's a backup, but it has to be, like Catherine said, has to be formally pledged.
For the first three or four years, they have to put in a little money.
Correct.
But it's still pledged to the remainder of the bond?
For the life of the bonds.
I think the thing we have to think about, whatever money we're pledging out here, okay, if, if, if everything works out as planned, like they'd like to see three to four restaurants there, we have to remember those, that, those food and beverage taxes are coming back to us. That's new revenue coming in that would help, help offset the first few years or whenever, or at least we get it back later in time, that money back from whatever we pay out, just from maybe those three or four restaurants whatever go there, is a thought.
No, and this bond's just for the infrastructure updates.
Yeah, this is for the, just the road infrastructure.
Now, when you say pledge money going forward, you know, when the TIF is already paying, but food and beverage has to pledge, do they encumber that, that money? Does it have to be put aside?
So at, at the time of budgeting, when you're planning for the next year's budget, you'll have a pretty good estimate of the tax increment that will be coming in. So you, I mean, you'd have to take into account what you're estimating for tax increment, and if it's not sufficient, then you would have to be able to use food and beverage revenues to make your debt service payments.
But going forward, and TIF is covering all the costs, we don't have to put money aside from food and beverage for future?
No, you'd look at it on an annual basis. I'm answering your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
I don't think so.
Yep, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. At this time, I'd like to open up for discussion for anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this issue. Need to state your name when you come up, please?
Sure. My name is Jason Nicolau. I'm the president of the RDC. And another few items to consider on the food and beverage equation is the fact that we don't have to wait for that increase for restaurants to be part of this development. Don't forget about the additional construction traffic that will also be in that area. So all those existing restaurants will theoretically have more business at the same time. And also with the other, the other businesses that are supposed to go into that development, there'll also be more traffic there. So when you're considering this and that food and beverage cosigning, as Mr. Kincaid said, is that the reason why our logic on the RDC may not have been communicated as well is the fact that we were also considering the additional traffic, not only from the medical facility, but also from the construction itself. So when you make your decision tonight, please consider those two factors as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. Any other comments from the public? Please step forward, step, or state your name.
Three minutes.
Okay. Okay. We have three minutes, if it's okay?
As soon as I start talking, you can start.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sandra Reed Love from 300 North and just outside of Lebanon. The downtown project cost of over $10 million is being repaid with TIF taxes available at $1,100,000 a year for 23 years. This is a total of $25,300,000, about $15 million interest for the project. Number one, you should take the TIF taxes you proposed for this gate project and pay down the over lengthy and overpriced interest of the downtown project. Number two, you could take 10% of all TIF paid taxes annually for schools. The Greater Clark schools have this advantage. It could reduce property taxes for citizens. City citizens and non-TIF businesses have been paying property taxes for the TIF districts with the exception of the base amount for years. The taxes the TIFs pay stay in the TIF district for further development of the TIFs, not for city expenses. The Lebanon citizens are paying city expenses with their property taxes. TIFs in Indiana cost each family $2,500 a year. This is abated from local property taxes. This from the research economist Michael Hicks from Ball State University, 2016 article. I don't have a computer, so I don't know how much it is now. I know it was $8 million that the state is involved with TIFs. There are abatements. There are citizens that should not be subsidizing TIFs because they can't afford to. Forty percent of Lebanon schoolchildren qualify for free or reduced lunch, and good citizens of Lebanon and Boone County are assisting this food insecurity with weekend and vacation assistance. Lebanon citizens have been subsidizers long enough. It's time to think of them. I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They haven't really been informing. I went to the 4H meeting out, at 4H Fairgrounds meeting, and there was obscurity about subsidizing the TIFs.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, please step up, state your name, please.
My name is Tom Valbrick. Just a kind of a overview. Evidently, I'm old school. No longer does a contractor come into a town and bring lots of money and build a project. Those days are probably gone. I just want you to look into your crystal ball a little bit better and make sure that we're making a wise decision on this. I'm not, I'm not opponent to the project. I think it's a fair project, but are we committing ourselves to money down the road, you know, for this project? So just as you think about it, make sure that you have a clear mind that it is going to go forward that way. Nobody has a crystal ball that says that we're going to have seven restaurants or nine restaurants or a hospital or lawyers or whatever in those buildings. Nobody can really say that right now because nobody has signed a contract. So we are just committing, and I say us, you are committing a large chunk of money to this project. I hope it is very successful. I have no reason to believe it won't, but again, we're compelling a lot of future money that we don't even have yet. It hasn't even arrived yet. So think hard on it, please, as a counsel. I beg you to do that.
Thank you.
And just to, just respond to Tom, the contractor is paying for everything. They're putting $17 million. We're putting a road in.
I understand. I said, you know, I, over the years, somebody coming in, doing everything, I know that exists.
Well, even 25 years ago, when they built the business park, we paid for Enterprise Boulevard, and that development now covers over 45% of Lebanon's property taxes. So it's a very successful operation. So that's my response.
Yeah.
But we got it.
Yeah, also, the TIF is paying for the road. That's all TIF is paying for. There's no tax abatements, none of that stuff that's going on with any of these properties. And yes, we don't know exactly for sure what's going in, but they've, they've been asked and been told that if we're going to use this to support the TIF, or support as a backup for a road there, we want some payback. So payback is, you're going to have to put a restaurant or two in there to help us pay this thing back. Yes, to Jason's point, builders coming in, building the new buildings and building the roads and whatever, that's going to help the food and beverage right there as well. So we don't, we're only using us, or only talking about using us as a backup. I don't think this will be something that's used all the time, but just understand, TIF is only being used to fix the infrastructure for the road, put that road in there and develop that site. So, and the builder's going to build all the buildings, all the lots and everything else as, as he gets, I won't say tenants, or as he sells it to whoever's going to build there, they're going to do that. Yeah, so we're not doing anything with that. Is that correct?
Yes. Any further comments from the public? At this time, I'll close the public comment section.
In, in council, just to reiterate, I know, I mentioned before, initially, we were seeking action on Resolution 2018-30. It doesn't need to occur this evening again, I know, so I'll leave that up to the council on, on what it wishes to do.
I don't see any reason why to postpone it.
I think it would be more appropriate if we had all council members here to, to hear the resolution for the next time and make a vote that way.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay?
Oh, I won't be here next meeting.
Six of the seven will be here next week. All right. Go to the next ordinance, huh?
I just, on the record, I do support the project.
Thank you, Dan. Next on new business, we have ordinance 2018-14, the common council consideration of Gateway Project to issue Economic Development Lease Rental Revenue Bonds.
Thank you, Councilman Copeland. This is ordinance number 2018-14, first reading, and it gets a little wordy, but it's an ordinance that would authorize the City of Lebanon to issue Economic Development Lease Rental Revenue Bonds, Series 2018, which is, again, the Gateway Marketplace Project. Approving a lease between the City of Lebanon Public Building Corporation as the lessor and the City of Lebanon Redevelopment Commission as the lesssee, pledging food and beverage tax revenues to the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission for the payment of certain lease rentals and authorizing and approving other actions in connection therewith. This ordinance, again, talks about the various bodies that we mentioned earlier, the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission, the Lebanon Public Building Corporation, the Economic Development Commission, and the city having approved, and which we haven't approved by this council, but this ordinance would indicate that the Economic Development Agreement would have been approved by this council. It has been approved by those other bodies that I just mentioned, and that Economic Development Agreement provides for the acquisition, the construction, and installation of certain infrastructure improvements together with any related equipment that's defined as the project, again, to support a mixed-use project to be located at the southeast quadrant of I-65 and State Road 32. This will be, again, defined as, or be constructed by the developer, which is Lebanon Gateway Properties LLC. The Redevelopment Commission on May 14th, 2018, adopted a declaratory resolution that established the Gateway Marketplace allocation area for the purposes of capturing property taxes generated from the increment assessed value of real property located in the allocation area. Pursuant to the terms of Economic Development Agreement, the developer has advised the Economic Development Commission and the city that it proposes that the city issue taxable or tax-exempt Economic Development Lease Rental Bonds in an amount not to exceed $3.3 million. The principal and interest on the bonds, again, will be payable from certain lease rentals that are pledged and assigned by the Building Corporation to the city and paid by the Redevelopment Commission under the terms of a proposed lease between the Building Corporation and the Redevelopment Commission. Pursuant to the lease, the lease rentals due under the lease shall be payable, again, from tax increment, and to the extent that tax increment is insufficient, the food and beverage tax revenues collected by the city. And to the extent that the food and beverage tax revenues are insufficient, a special tax levied on all taxable property within the Lebanon Redevelopment District. This council has determined that it will be a public utility and benefit to pledge the food and beverage tax, and the council desires to approve the lease pursuant to Indiana Code, which provides any lease approved by a resolution of the Redevelopment Commission must also be approved by an ordinance or resolution of the fiscal body. Further, it says that on August 13th of 2018, the Economic Development Commission conducted a public hearing in accordance with Indiana Code, which it did earlier, and it adopted its resolution, finding that the financing of all or a portion of the project complies with the purposes of Indiana Code. And such financing will be a benefit to the health and general welfare of the city. The EDC has also approved and recommended the adoption of this form of ordinance to this council is considered the issue of adverse competitive effect and approved the forms of and will transmit for approval of the council, the forms of a financing agreement. forms of, and will transmit for approval of the council, the forms of a financing agreement between the city and the developer.
Sub moved.
Trust indenture with respect to the bonds between the city and the trustee, and the financing documents in the bond ordinance. So, and it goes on further detail, but that is the crux of ordinance 2018-14.
Any thoughts or comments from the council?
This, this first reading, right?
Yes. This is first reading?
Nope, I don't have any.
At this time, I'd like to open it up again to the public for any public comment on this particular ordinance, 2018-14, the project to issue economic development lease rental revenue bonds. Anyone from the public like to step up and speak tonight? As I see no one, I'll close the open public. Do I have a motion on this particular ordinance?
First reading.
I'm sorry. Don't need them all, it's first reading.
Yeah, we, this is just first reading, we don't-
Okay. Last I have on, under new business, city council appointment to the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. Our last council member is no longer on the Redevelopment Commission, so we're now taking any volunteers or any nominees for a member from the council to be on that.
I nominate Dick Robertson to be on the council?
Nomination, Dick, do I have a second?
On the Redevelopment Commission?
Yes. I'm sorry. For Redevelopment Commission? Yep. Second?
I'll second.
I would say, all in favor, say aye.
I guess I'll take it since no one's volunteering.
We could have nominated Brett, wait, he's not here.
Yeah, we could have waited to nominate-
Brett said no, too.
Okay. You're okay with it, Dick?
Yes, I'll be happy to.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Next on the agenda, I have claims. Do I have a motion to accept the claims?
I make a motion to pay the claims.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to pay the claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Is there any new or information we need tonight? Any comments?
I'd like to share some. The, the, since we announce city stuff, this is not really a city event, but this week is the Ladies Professional Golf Association I-WIT Championship at the Brickyard in Indianapolis this week. It actually starts Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it's the top lady golfers in the PGA that are coming to the Speedway to play. They'll have eight of the top 10 money winners, plus all the other top players there, and it, they'll be having 144 players starting, and it's a big event, and I'll be there, so if anybody wants to stop by, hole number four, say hi, that's where I'll be all week, so.
There you go. Anything else?
Well, we, hey, we got to wish Dick a late happy birthday, his birthday was yesterday.
Happy birthday, Dick. Thank you. Tom's got to go in.
Tom, do you have a question?
I have a question for the common council or the mayor's office.
Which one?
Been a lot of proclamations over the years, shop local, support local, things like that. I've noticed that we have a contractor in the city that is touting that they are city prefer, or preferred as a contractor. I wasn't aware that the city was doing that, regulating one particular group or groups over the others. Maybe it's allowed, maybe it's not, but it should be at least brought to the mayor's attention, he's not here, so I'm bringing it to-
We appreciate it.
Don Copeland's attention, that, you know, if, if that is what the city is going to do, then I'm sure we got a lot of local contractors, landscapers, roofers that would want to come forward and go, "Put me on that list."
Right.
What happens if XYZ company does a bad job and I saw a sign that says "city preferred"? Do I now come to the city and say, "My roof's leaking, are you preferred, the gentleman? Are you going to fix my roof?" I just wanted to know if that's something the city is doing, I wasn't aware of.
Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I've noticed that sign as well. I can assure you, the city is not making a practice to recommend any contractor as preferred. We can look into this issue further, and certainly, any concerns like this could be forwarded to the planning office or the mayor's office, but rest assured, we, we are not in the practice of recommending any contractor, and, and we did not recommend the contractor whose, whose sign is in question here.
Right. I've not seen the sign myself, but-
Well, there are several in the city.
Okay. You've seen them? I-
I've talked to them. Okay. The one was for hail damage, I think, right here.
That's the one, I mean, there are several signs of that contractor throughout the city.
Yeah.
I traveled through the city on a daily basis for my job-
Okay.
-and being observant, I had seen them, and I thought, gee, that's great, I'll try to, I mean, I'll get the city to back me now.
We, we are not recommending that contractor, I'm not so sure that we can do anything if the sign is compliant with our sign ordinance, you know, but it's-
I was interested if the city had adopted that plan, and I wasn't aware.
We have not.
So, it's just a wild advertising claim.
Yeah, we have not made that. Any other comments? I will say, I want to thank the mayor for being on vacation tonight, and Keith Campbell for nominating me to be here this evening. Keith's been ill for the last couple of weeks, and he's back home, so if anybody sees him, wish he may get well soon, he's doing very well. So Keith, if you're out there watching tonight, we're all thanking you. And with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Sub moved. So we have one motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, thank you very much.